I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen.
Dear Lord, we ask your blessing over this meeting in the midst of the busy and complex world we live. Let your will be clear and let your will be done. Amen.
Amen.
Please turn and face our flag and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, if we can have our attorneys report out the closed session action this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bruce May, special counsel to the city on the personnel matter. In accordance with closed session proceedings occurring on November 23, 2010, and pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code Section 2.44.390, the city council and city manager reviewed draft amended written findings and conclusions sustaining the police department's decision to terminate the employment of a certain former Garden Grove police officer. Based on all of the evidence and arguments in the administrative record, the city council, with the concurrence of the city manager, voted to adopt the written findings, I should say, written amended findings and conclusions sustaining the police department's decision to terminate the employment of the police officer in question. The city council vote was unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, I'd also like to report out a closed session. During a closed session meeting held on September 28, 2010, and pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code Section 2.44.390, the city council and city manager reviewed disciplinary action taken against a former Garden Grove firefighter. Based on all of the evidence and arguments in the administrative record, the city council voted three to two that the hearing officer's decision to uphold an administrative decision to terminate the employment of the firefighter should be set aside, and the firefighter should be subject to a lengthy suspension and then returned to his position. Councilmembers Broadwater, Nguyen, and Doe voted to set aside the decision of the hearing officer. Mayor Dalton and Councilmember Jones voted to uphold the decision of the hearing officer. Okay, at this time, we'll go to oral communications for the public regarding certification of the election. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on that? Okay, seeing, excuse me, seeing none, I'll close oral communications. Okay, we'll go to four, section, subject four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and four A is the adoption of a resolution reciting the fact of the general municipal election held November 2, 2010, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. I recommend you adopt the resolution.
Okay, we're looking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Broadwater, you're standing. Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, four B.
Mr. Mayor, four B is the oath of office administered to elected Mayor Dalton with the certificate of election presented by the city clerk, and Mayor Dalton to be seated at this time.
Ready? Okay.
And if Mrs. Sandy Dalton would come forward to administer the oath of office.
Aye. Oh, raise your, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
Aye, Bill Dalton.
Aye, Bill Dalton.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
We're going to go to four.
Okay, next, yes.
Four C is the oath of office administered to elected Councilmember Broadwater with the certificate of election presented by our fire chief, David Burka, and to seat Member Broadwater.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bruce Broadwater.
I, Bruce Broadwater.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, four D is the oath of office administered to elected Councilmember Nguyen with the certificate of election presented by Joe Doe Nguyen, and Councilmember Nguyen to be seated.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after B. Aye.
Aye.
Do you know, Nguyen?
Do you know, Nguyen?
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, four D is the oath of office administered to elected Councilmember Nguyen with the certificate of election presented by Joe Doe Nguyen, and Councilmember Nguyen to be seated.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after B. Aye.
Aye.
Do you know, Nguyen?
Do you know, Nguyen?
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge these duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, it's customary to extend the floor to each of the council members to make any comments that they'd like to make at this time.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the voters in the city of Garden Grove. I'm honored that, I felt actually really great when I saw over 74 percent of the votes were cast for me, and I hope that's an indication that everybody wants us to continue doing what we're doing. All three incumbents were reelected, and so I think that says something for where we're going with the city and what we're doing. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for your vote and for your comments and criticisms, too, because sometimes we have to be kept on track. So if there's something that you feel that we're not doing, or you think there may be a better way, please contact one or all of us and let us know, because sometimes the greatest ideas come from some of the people that sit out there. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm sort of excited to be here. This is the eighth election that I've won, and I lost three. A lot of people think that guy goes on and on and on, he wins elections, but they forget that they lose a few getting there. I want to thank all that voted for me. This wasn't the most exciting election, and it was sort of boring at times, but it was, it was fun. And I want to thank my wife and my two sons and my grandchildren. I mean, my family is most important to me, and I'm just grateful for them sticking by me. All, over the years, I remember when I first got elected, my two sons weren't thrilled with that. They said, "Everybody talks about us at high school and everything else," and, but I caught both of them out at the front door of this building showing the new girlfriends that they had their name on the building. So it's been exciting. I love politics, I love to be involved, and I think some of the changes that have been made in this city in the last 15 years have been great. I certainly think that our mayor is doing a fine job, as well as the rest of the council, so I'm just glad to be here.
First of all, I want to thank my family and friends for their willingness to share me with the city of Garden Grove for the next four years. And if the citizens of Garden Grove did not give me the opportunity during this election with their votes, I don't think I would have that opportunity to serve the city another term. And I'm very thankful for that, and I also am aware that there were other votes that did not go my way, and I want those citizens to know that I'm here if they have any concerns. I'm open, my doors are open, and I'm open to criticisms as well as comments and suggestions from them the next four years. Thirdly, I want to thank the present council. I think it's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of them. They each have been supportive in their own ways, and I'm looking forward to the next four years, working with them and bringing to the city of Garden Grove to the next level out of this economic crisis and two bigger and better things, especially international West. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a very special community spotlight tonight. We're going to recognize our outgoing Chief of Police, Joe Polisar, who's retiring after 33 years in law enforcement, and more importantly, after 12 years of serving as our chief. And I'd like Keith Jones to read the spotlight this evening. Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize a 12-year veteran of the Garden Grove Police Department with 33 years of law enforcement service under his belt. As Garden Grove Police Chief, he's made a lasting impression and contribution not only to the police department, but to the community as well. And he's already at the podium. Chief Joe Polisar began his career in law enforcement with the Albuquerque Police Department in 1977. While there, he held positions in all bureaus, including field services, criminal investigations, and administrative services. He retired as Chief of Police in 1997. While working as a young patrolman on the Albuquerque Police Force, he faced a situation every officer fears, and one that can happen any day on the job, being shot at by a suspect during a life and death struggle. While struggling to disarm a knife-wielding man threatening suicide, the subject was able to grab Officer Polisar's gun from its holster and get off a shot. The bullet went through the Officer Polisar's jacket, filling the room with goose down feathers. The incident is a reminder for Joe that life is precious, and officers are always moments away from terror and mayhem. He keeps a photo of the bullet-ridden jacket in his office. In 1998, Joe Polisar was named Garden Grove's 10th Chief of Police. He holds a bachelor's degree in management and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, FBI National Executive Institute and Program for Senior Executives in State and Local Government at the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. During his tenure at the Garden Grove Police Department, Chief Polisar served as president of the International Association of Chief of Police, an organization with over 20,000 members in 90 countries. He's a member of many professional associations, including the FBI National Academy Associates, FBI National Executive Institute Associates, and the Police Executive Research Forum. Chief Polisar is also a commissioner with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, also known as CALEA. In 1988, Garden Grove became the first Southern California Municipal Police Agency with CALEA accreditation. Last month, over 500 law enforcement professionals from the United States, Canada, and Mexico came to Garden Grove for the annual CALEA conference. The conference was a chance to showcase our city, police department, and the OC Garden Grove was reaccredited for the second time as a flagship meritorious agency. What a fitting way to end Chief Polisar's career here in Garden Grove. Chief Polisar has received many awards throughout his career, including Albuquerque Human Rights Award, the NAACP Martin Luther King Jr. Keep the Dream Alive Award, and the Albuquerque People's Choice Award for a Favorite Government Official. In 2003, he received the Community Achievement Award from the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. He was also the recipient of the 2010 Spurgeon Award for Contributions to Police Exploring. Joe and his wife Liz are Garden Grove residents and have two children, son Brooklyn and daughter Savannah. Joe leaves a well-managed department that will continue to thrive, largely due to the legacy he leaves behind. At this time, the Marin City Council would like to present Chief Polisar with a resolution of commendation as a token of appreciation for 33 years of outstanding service, 12 with the city and community of Garden Grove. The city wishes you and your family all the best as you celebrate your retirement.
As far as the resolution goes, I was going to read all these whereas's, but I think just about everything's been covered in here. Other than, but the only thing I want to add to it is, I first met Joe Polisar, Chief Joe Polisar, in 1998. He was coming in the door, and I was going out the door. He was coming in as the Chief of Police, and I was going out because I'd just been elected to city council, so I was retiring. I probably, out of most of the, I think realistically, out of the whole council up here, I can probably appreciate the Chief of Police more having been a police officer myself. And so I can look at the accomplishments from not always just a political point of view, but from a humanistic point of view and from a departmental point of view. And I tell you something, that I worked for probably five or six chiefs, and none of them, believe me, none of them could hold a candle to Chief Joe. He not only is respected by his men, his women, the community, everybody, anyone that comes in contact with him walks away feeling more positive about him and themselves and about law enforcement in the city of Garden Grove. Kevin's got some big shoes to fill, and, you know, we'll see. But I personally, I want to thank you very much for everything that you've done, not only for me as an individual or the police department, but my community and my kids and grandkids and everybody else. Thank you, Chief.
Chief of Police. I was in the hunt for a job and put my name in for many reasons. I'd done some research, and the Garden Grove Police Department just, it shined. And it certainly helped the fact that it was already accredited, and I knew that was one less thing that I would have to worry about. But the council back then and the city manager took a leap of faith. There were 360 some odd chiefs in this state of California. You could count the number of chiefs in the state of California in 1998 on one hand who had come from out of state. So I thank the former city manager and the councilman for taking that leap of faith. My wife and kids, my kids were six and eight at the time. They are pure California kids right now. New Mexico is where grandma lives, and that's it. So we're not going anywhere, we're staying here. My kids grew up here, they're products of the Garden Grove Unified School District. My wife was 21 years, she was the secretary to the city council in Albuquerque. And I asked her to give up a 21-year career to follow me out here, and she did. It's a great opportunity, it's a great community, you have a great department, you really do. And you mentioned that, you know, Kevin has big shoes. No, Kevin has his own size of shoes. He's going to bring a level of leadership to the department that you will be very, very proud of. This department is a great department, so thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the recognition. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have someone has to leave, but number eight, written communications.
Mr. Mayor, you have a request from the Korean Chamber of Commerce of Orange County for some assistance to help them restore their Korean Business District monument sign. You have a written request for that. Some of you may know that this sign was destroyed in an automobile accident some time ago, and the city spent some time trying to recoup any type of insurance or monies from either the driver or the folks involved in the accident. And after many months, that ended up being unsuccessful. So the Korean business, community is looking for ways to help restore that sign, and they've made a written request that the city council contribute $5,000 towards a $17,000 cost to restore the sign. They've indicated that they've raised $7,000 already, and they still need to complete some additional fundraising for that. I think Yvonne Cho is here to speak on behalf of the group if need be. Otherwise, we're here to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Broad. How much money we got in the arts fund?
Several thousand. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but there's several thousands of dollars in that fund.
Yvonne, come on forward.
Okay, we'll see.
Pull that mic down so we can hear you, the microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dalton, and the city council members. My name is Yvonne Cho, and I'm with the Korean Chamber of Commerce of Orange County, which is located in the Orange, Garden Grove, city of Garden Grove. And I hope you already read my request in a letter, and I'm sure you're aware of all those stories. But simply, at this point, I just like to ask you and hope you approve our request. In advance, I really appreciate your thoughtful contribution for these. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to ask.
Go ahead.
I, no questions. Just kind of, yeah. I'm very supportive of the request. I, I don't know if we have funding to be able to do this. If I can ask if we can, can, if the city manager can report back to the council on, on possible sources of funding that we can tap into to assist in this manner. I know this is a private monument, but it does reflect positively on our city, because the Korean Business District is a very big component of this city. It is one of our main cultural community, communities. And, and I think if we can help to, to maintain and to bolster the image, and that will help our business as well, and indirectly, it will help our sales taxes in this city. So I don't know at this point, you can respond to this, but you don't have to. If you can maybe let us know in the future any sources of funding that we can use for this.
Let me ask you a question. Do you think, I mean, would be, would we be fairly secure in knowing that we could find the money somewhere and go ahead and vote tonight, or wait for a report back to you?
I think for this dollar amount, we should be able to find a source of funds that would be eligible to help fund the sign.
Well, now, I'll go ahead and move it. I'll make a motion if we do that.
Second.
Motion and second, or call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Maybe I can ask Councilmember Nguyen, it's seven o'clock. We can continue with a few more items, or whenever you feel the recess?
Oh, that's adequate. We can recess now.
We can recess now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll recess the council meeting for the, the reception in the other room.
And Susan Emery is settling in to give a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I would just identify a few key points for this agenda item. And the first, that the request for the time extension is to construct 144 residential units on a 6.82 acre site and a subdivision to sell the units as condominiums. The project was approved in 2006 through a development agreement that included entitlements of a site plan and a tentative tract map. The development agreement and all the included land use entitlements had a four-year expiration until December 13 of this year. The tentative tract map has been extended for three years, and that's because of the automatic time extensions granted by state legislation. The applicant has requested a time extension based on the current market conditions and the scarcity of funds from lending institutions. By amending the development agreement to extend the expiration date for three years, the site plan and the variance will be consistent with the tentative tract map and have a single expiration date of December 13, 2013. The planning commission heard the request on November 4 and recommends that the city council, and I will, or approve the ordinance, and I will read the ordinance title. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting an amendment to a development agreement between Cynthia Circle Development, LP Developer, and the city of Garden Grove for property located at the end of Cynthia Circle cul-de-sac on the east side of Euclid Street, north of Westminster Avenue at 11031 Cynthia Circle, parcel number 100-391-22. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Peggy Bergen.
Well, inasmuch as this is a very similar situation to last meeting's extension, I just really don't understand, because when reading through the things, one of the reasons the builder stated was... the builder stated was funding issues. Well, in two thousand and six, the real estate market was flying off the wall, as we all know. That's what happened to everything falling around our ears two years later. So why didn't they, when they had this all approved and ready to go, why didn't he get the money then and do it rather than put it off again? Once again, we're having an extension, put on properties that, maybe they don't even need to be improved. I mean, maybe they need to be improved. I didn't actually drive over and see this, but we're looking at ninety-nine units to one hundred and forty-four. We're looking at another fifty units taking ten trips a day. That's another five hundred trips coming out onto the west, the Euclid and Westminster area, which basically speaking, anytime after two in the afternoon and before eleven in the morning, that's, that's a crowded intersection already. Now, we're adding a possible five hundred trips a day to that. I mean, I do realize that the planning commission has approved all this. But I, I really don't understand how, when these people had supposed all the approvals in line, all the, everything was taken care of, two thousand and six, people were building and selling anything that was built. Why didn't they do it then? Why did they wait, keep pushing off, putting it off until all of a sudden everything crashed and burned? And now, who knows what it's gonna be like from now till two thousand and thirteen? I really don't understand. There's a unit, once again, over on Fairview, right at Trask, where they, we had the street widening and those, I think it's twenty-two units. They're all, they look like somebody could move in tomorrow and they were only approved in September. That man got the approval before anyone could change their mind. They're built and he's gonna be selling them. That meant he really wanted to do this project and it wasn't too big. A hundred and forty-four units is a very large development. I just really don't understand why these, when they get the approvals, they don't do it. If they don't have the money to back this or have some very good idea where the money's coming from, I'm not gonna start a room addition on my house till I get somebody that says I'm gonna cut you a check. Because it's such a nightmare in hell going through all the paperwork and having to redo it if, if something falls through. Why do corporations not think the same way? But I, I just don't understand why. This is the second one in two meetings that basically speaking, and this one doesn't even have the good excuse that they were swapping property with the church. This one is just, he couldn't find money. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Make sure that, before you leave, you fill out a pink card, please.
I mean, I don't know if I need to respond. I'm the applicant. My name is Russ Van Cleve with Empire Homes and Cynthia Circle Development. We did get the approvals in two thousand and six and we saw the market collapsing in two thousand and six. And in May, we ceased all building of all homes anywhere in Southern California. And it continued to tumble and it would have been a horrendously bad idea to have continued like the previous lady suggested. We all saw it collapse. So it's still down and it's, it's not a prudent thing to do yet. It's that simple.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Open for comments. I'll move the issue.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now I think we go back up to five reorganization. Is that right?
That's correct. Five A, selection of Mayor Protem.
And I move to retain Mayor Protem, Steve Jones, in his position.
A second, now.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now we go to oral communications for council agency and industrial development Peggy Bergen.
Well, basically speaking, I was going to start out and say congratulations, so I've already eaten with you and congratulated you there, so I feel this is a little bit late, but anyways, congratulations all of you and keep up the good work and keep up having people that we can all fight with. So that's, that's right up there. Now, one of the things I've been noticing as I drive around in the evenings is that there's a lot less ornaments and decorations in people's houses this year. You know, I do know the economy is very dodgy, let's put it that way, but it's kind of a little bit sad when you think this is Christmas and it only comes once a year in so many of the areas. And it's not always the poorer areas. It's the areas where people supposedly have a little bit more money and there's no decorations out. It's kind of a little bit down. But I went to the meeting, I think it was about two weeks ago, for the public transportation along the right-of-way for the different forms of, either they put in a high-speed bus or some type of a street car or high-speed rail. And there's a lot of information out there. They are really trying to do their best to see that people all along the way have their options to have their opinions heard and listened to. And it was quite interesting because I didn't realize that they were even that close to coming to, to starting something or seriously considering something. So that was quite an interesting meeting. And this one, I just thought of myself. Congratulations to Garden Grove for winning CIF. I remember when my son was a senior in high school and they went just for the first playoff, how exciting that was. And we had to drive somewhere way up in Pomona or something, but it's, it's very exciting for the kids, it's very exciting for the families, and it's, it's really an experience. So that's really quite an achievement for Garden Grove. I think it's something like forty-six years or, my, my kids knew all the statistics they were telling me, but it's been quite a long time since Garden Grove has won CIF, any, any Garden Grove school. So that's, that's really quite an achievement themselves. One of the items is a consent item. Those ones that, over that I was just speaking of on Fairview, they are having that right-of-way, I guess the builder is going to buy it from the city or something for the property, which is only the secondary access for emergencies, not even for the residents in that area. And I would have thought that would have been something that would have been taken care of when the property was first purchased and before they started building, that that would belong to the builder or the exchange of properties would have been from the city council or the redevelopment agency. So I kind of wonder why, why they, they didn't just do that all at one time. Because that's their property. You'd think they'd wanna have control of it from the day they start the project. But I have two other things listed here and I have no idea what my notes mean, so I guess that means it couldn't have been too important. Thank you very much and everyone have a happy holiday season, even all those people out there that do watch this program. I was quite amazed at how many people watch this. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I also would like to congratulate the winners of the last election and wish all of you a very happy Christmas and New Years. This is the season for giving. Whether it's a crazy tie for Grandpa Bill for Christmas, or a child's first dreidel for Hanukkah, or alms for the poor, every faith has its own gift traditions. Even those with no particular religious beliefs participate in the seasonal celebrations in their own way. In these difficult economic times, few of us can afford diamonds, while others may be very pleased just to get a new sweater. There is however, a gift that most of us can easily afford and can be worth everything to someone else. This is the gift of life. I'm not talking about giving your own life, only a small part of it, by being a blood donor. Your donation today can mean the next years or decades to someone else. We all enjoy the satisfaction of watching the surprise when someone opens our gift to them, but we may never know the person we have saved with our blood. I know that many people have a fear of needles or think it may be too painful. Actually, it's less painful than stubbing your toe. And it doesn't last nearly as long. If you're squeamish, don't watch. Personally, I always watch and I imagine my blood flowing into someone who needs it desperately. Some people may say it's inconvenient to take an hour or two from their busy day. How inconvenient is it for someone injured in an automobile or other accident? How inconvenient is it for one of our troops lying wounded on a distant battlefield? Yet this is the season for giving and I ask that you please take a moment and consider giving the gift of life. And remember, some will give so that others may live. To contact the Red Cross Blood Bank, please call one eight hundred GIVE LIFE. They will give you directions to the nearest location to you. They will also tell you when their blood mobile will be visiting the Veterans Hospital in Long Beach. If you go there to donate blood, all the donations taken there go to our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close oral communications at this time. And we'll go to consent items.
Yes. And it's recommended that, yes, we pull items nine C and nine D and ask the council to consider acting on the balance of the items.
Okay.
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
All right, now we're gonna go with nine C and nine D and that also goes with five A on, uh-
Right. What we're gonna do is keep the city council in session-
Going, we'll open the agency.
And open the agency.
Let the record show that all members are present. And so, right now, we're dealing with five A from the agency and nine C and nine D from the council.
Not yet.
Not yet. We're not dealing with those.
Not there yet.
Okay.
Five A and act on five B and five C.
Go ahead.
Not yet.
Pull five A and act on-
Well, we gotta select a chair and vice chair for the agency.
Oh. I nominate Bruce Broadwater for chair.
A second.
Call for the vote. Forgot I was in charge.
Motion received, five yes votes.
All right.
And then you need to select a vice chair.
Okay.
Nominate Councilwoman Deena Nguyen for vice chair.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now, under consent calendar, we're gonna ask that you pull item five A and act on item five B and five C.
Uh, move the balance.
Call for the vote. Okay. Have motion and second. Call for the vote.
Okay.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay.
Now, before we go to item seven A, which is a public hearing, uh, do they actually have to open the public hearing before?
No, no. We're, we're going to, as I, as I understand it now, we're going to move forward on city council items nine C and nine D, then move to agency item, consent item, five A, and then move to the public hearing on seven A, all of which are related items. And we're gonna handle those as a group.
And I'm gonna leave the room and not participate to avoid any appearance of impropriety because I have a business relationship with the applicant on these items.
Yes. I think we're doing pretty good.
Okay.
So what I'd ask is the city council now consider consent calendar item nine C and nine D.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion.
Second.
I have motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
And now we'll have the agency consider consent item number five A.
Resolution approving the transfer of property from the city agency to community development for real property that is in portion of Avalon Lane, southwest of Trask Avenue and Fairview Street in Garden Grove, parcel number one oh one six five two oh nine. Always wanted to do that, so.
Good show.
Move approval. We have a motion. Second. Call for the vote. Okay.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, now, you have a public hearing to consider the sale of the property from the agency to Palamo LLC. And Greg Brown is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Chairman Broadwater, members of the agency, before you tonight is a request that the agency conduct a public hearing to consider the sale of real property adjoining Avalon Lane, southwest of Trask Avenue to Pomelo LLC. The subject property consists of approximately one thousand one hundred and nine square feet of vacant land that was utilized as an alley. The buyers agreed to acquire the subject property from the agency in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is equal to the acquisition price paid by the city for the property, and the property is being sold in as-is condition. And we're buying that property from the county of Orange ultimately through the city into the agency and ultimately then to the developer. Based on the foregoing information, staff recommends that the city council and agency take the following actions. One, conduct a public hearing. Two, approve the sale of subject property adjoining Avalon Lane, southwest of Trask Avenue and Fairview Street identified as assessor's parcel number one zero one dash six five two dash zero nine. Authorize the agency director to execute the purchase and sale agreement and to make minor modifications as needed on behalf of the agency, and expedite any other necessary documents for the transaction, and authorize the agency director to execute the grant deed on behalf of the agency. That concludes my report. Of course, we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, do we have any comments from the council for staff?
Yes.
Nope.
Yes. How much did we buy this property for?
We bought it for sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Okay.
And this is an alley, correct?
That's my understanding, Chairman Broadwater, that it is, is an alley. And it was one of those issues where, for some reason during the annexation process way back when, it just didn't get taken care of then and it was much easier for us to get involved and deal with the county than it would have been for Pomelo. So that's why we became involved.
Okay. But it's mandated that we have to sell it for the same price we bought it for. Isn't that correct?
Fair market value is, is usually the standard, yes. It's correct.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Now would be the time. Hearing none, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what is your wish?
Move to approve?
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, matters from agency members. Anybody like to speak up and say anything at this point? Hearing none, at this time, we will recess until January eleventh. Or adjourn. Let's adjourn. It's a long recess.
Okay, we're doing pretty good.
Okay, next we do industrial development?
Yes. It's recommended we call the IDA to order. I don't know. Call the IDA to order.
Oh, you mean take a ten, take a ten. Oh, okay. Sorry.
We only do this once a year.
It's not just you. This night has been that kind of a night for everybody.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Vice Chair Jones?
Here.
Chair Nguyen?
Here.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to reorganization?
Yes.
Selection of chair and vice chair. I move that you remain-
I'm moving, we remain, everybody remain the same.
Vice Chair Jones and Chair Nguyen, I nominate them both, if I can do both with one.
Yes.
Or I can do them separately if you want. Okay, I'll, I nominate each of them for the positions that they currently hold. Have, do I have a second? Okay. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Yeah, I thought so too. So, uh-
So, what number are we on now?
We get to do consent items, and you got the annual report of the Industrial Development Authority and minutes from last year. It's recommended you prove these together.
I have a...
Move the items.
Second.
For vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no items for consideration. Any matters from members? Hearing none. And I'll call for the adjournment of the Garden Grove Industrial Development Authority.
Okay, we'll resume the council meeting and ten B.
Ten B, yes, public hearing.
Yep.
And that's consider an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code adding new definitions related to emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing. And Maria Parra is here to give a staff report for this item.
I'm gonna introduce it real quick.
Oh.
Mr. City Manager, before Maria. Just to set it up for you, the state adopted SB two in 2008, and the purpose of this legislation was to address the growing needs of California's homeless population. This bill requires jurisdictions to develop development standards for homeless and low-income housing projects. This process is required of jurisdictions after the approval of the housing element, which for our city was approved by the city council, I think, maybe a year and a half ago, or perhaps two, and then approved by the state last year. As a mandate of the state, this is much like other ordinances that the city council has been required to adopt in the past, including last year, the landscape ordinance, and other housing-related ordinances that you've approved, including the second unit ordinance some time ago and the density bonus ordinance. So, a number of these ordinances are being required by the state to address the low-income needs of the California population. And Maria has a PowerPoint, and she's gonna walk you through that right now.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. So this is a PowerPoint, so please ensure that your monitors are turned on. So tonight's presentation is gonna give an overview of SB two, which is intended to address California's homeless population, as well as to address access to low-income housing. Last year, staff brought to city council an amendment which updated the group home definitions of the municipal code. Those used that will be presented tonight, while they may appear to be similar to group homes, they do not constitute group homes.
Excuse me, no, no, there's a switch. That's what I was just... That noise was me locating the switch. It'll shut... It'll come on in a minute.
You have to push the switch. The last button in the way.
Nobody was asleep at the switch?
No.
Well, our switches are on. Speak for yourself.
Bottom right.
Yeah, right.
Bottom right switch.
I learned that last council meeting.
Technology, it's wonderful.
Where's the manual for this?
Sorry, no, go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
So amendment number A15710 will amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to introduce new definitions and development standards for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing. The amendment is intended to implement program 10 of the Garden Grove Housing Element, which requires standards to be adopted for the uses to comply with Senate Bill Two. Senate Bill Two was adopted by California's legislature in 2008, and is intended to address California's homeless population by requiring jurisdictions to adopt standards to facilitate the development of emergency shelters, transitional housing, supportive housing, and single-room occupancy developments. At this time, this amendment will not establish standards for single-room occupancy developments as these standards will be adopted at a later date with the adoption of the mixed-use zones. On November 4th, 2010, the Planning Commission recommended adoption of the negative declaration and approval of amendment number 15710 to the city council. So the next series of slides will provide a brief overview of issues along with the proposed standards. So an emergency shelter is also a homeless shelter, and it's a facility that provides immediate and short-term housing, limited to six months or less, to homeless persons or families. So individuals who may use an emergency shelter include individuals who have suffered in economic hardship, such as losing a job, or those who are employed but cannot afford the high cost of rent, and must stay in an emergency shelter while they find housing assistance. Senate Bill Two requires that jurisdictions identify a zone where emergency shelters will be permitted by right without requiring a discretionary reapproval, which means that the city cannot require a conditional use permit or any type of special entitlement. Emergency shelters are required to be subject to the same development standards as other uses located within the same zone. But SB two does allow the city to provide flexibility in applying written objective and management standards as described in the statute to regulate emergency shelters. So there are eight objective standards describing the statute that emergency shelters can be subject to. In identifying a zone where emergency shelters will be permitted by right, the primary goal was to identify a zone that would have the least impact to R1, single-family residential zone properties, while at the same time identifying a zone that will provide convenient access to public transportation and commercial centers that could serve the daily needs of homeless population. So staff determined that the M1 Zone, Limited Industrial Zone, would be the most appropriate zone to accommodate an emergency shelter as it provides sufficient separation from R1 Zone properties. The Planning Commission further recommended that an emergency shelter overlay zone be created to identify the M1 Zone properties where emergency shelters would be specifically allowed to further minimize impacts to adjacent schools and residential properties. So this is a map of the emergency shelter overlay zone as recommended by the Planning Commission. So the areas that it's high... With the blue-hatched area, that is the overlay zone. So the overlay zone would be bordered by Harbor Boulevard, Westminster Avenue, New Hope Street, and the 22 freeway. So this would be the only area in Garden Grove that would permit emergency shelters. So this location is ideal to accommodate emergency shelters, as the properties are centrally located in Garden Grove and provide access to public transportation, which are located on Westminster Avenue, as well as Harbor Boulevard, and are adjacent to commercial retail centers. The overlay zone also provides a 450-foot separation from the residential properties located to the west of New Hope Street. Again, the goal of the overlay zone is to create minimal impacts to surrounding residential properties. We do have other M1 Zone properties located in the city of Garden Grove, located in the industrial area on the west side of Garden Grove, along Garden Grove Boulevard and Western Avenue, and also several properties on Stanford Avenue and Nelson Street. But these properties currently have a land use designation of mixed use, so when the mixed-use development standards are adopted, those properties will be rezoned. However, the city council would like staff to entertain emergency shelters in other locations or in those industrial mixed use. Staff can evaluate that possibility. As mentioned earlier, there are eight objective standards, and in looking at the standards, we did review the standards adopted by the city of Brea and Cypress, and we use those as a guide. So the first standard allows the city to regulate the maximum number of persons that can be served nightly at an emergency shelter. So the city has determined that 60 persons would be the appropriate number to be served nightly. And this number is based on the County of Orange Point and Time Study that was conducted in 2007 that estimates that at any given point in time, there were 60 unsheltered persons in Garden Grove. The second standard allows the city to regulate the size and location of the waiting areas. So we determined that 10 square feet would be the appropriate size of a waiting area to allow for client intake. The city can also regulate the number of off-street parking based on a demonstrated need. So this standard is similar to the one adopted by the city of Cypress and the city of Brea. But we did include that the applicants could also submit a parking study to demonstrate the appropriate need for onsite parking. The cities could also require onsite management. So similar to the city of Cypress and Brea, we will require a minimum of one staff member to be awake during the hours of operation when the facility is open. The city can also regulate the distance requirements between emergency shelters, provided that the distance is not greater than 300 square feet. So we're gonna follow the state statute, which allows for maximum separation of 300 feet. Cities can also regulate the length of stay that a client can stay at an emergency shelter. So we've limit the number to 120 days within a 360-day period. This number is based on the federal housing funding policy, so homeless shelters that receive federal funds have a maximum 120-day maximum length of stay. The city could also regulate lighting for the property, and for this one, we're gonna refer back to the municipal code, which are current standards for parking lot lighting. The city can also require a security plan for each emergency shelter, so we're gonna require a security and safety plan that addresses the separation of the male, female, and family sleeping areas, how the facility will minimize clients from loitering with the facility if it's not in operation, how the facility would manage outdoor areas, and also monitoring of waiting areas with the goals to minimize disruptions to nearby land uses, and also how the operator will control and regulate illegal drug and alcohol use by the clients on the premises. So these are the eight standards that have been designed to comply with the SB two requirements. The next slide would address transitional and supportive housing. So according to SB two, transitional and supportive housing are residential use and are subject to the same standards as other residential uses of the same type. So transitional housing is temporary housing that's designed to assist homeless individuals and families transitioning to permanent housing. So homeless families and persons may live in these facility from six months to two years while they receive services that enable them to live independently. So currently, Garden Grove currently has one transitional housing in the city that's operated by Thomas House, and that's... They have an apartment complex that's based for 50 families, so that's currently located on Morningside Street in the Buena Clinton area. So supportive housing is permanent, affordable housing occupied by a target population, and these would be individuals, adults with low income, having one or more disabilities such as mental illness, HIV, or substance abuse, but it's linked to on- and off-site services, such as they could be receiving medical and health care, vocational training, or employment services. Transitional housing and supportive housing can be configured as group living facilities or as apartments. So we have... So residential facilities, transitional and supportive housing that are configured as residential group living, we consider them similar to community care facilities, and these are state-licensed residential facilities, which means that group living facilities with six persons or less would be allowed by right in all residential zones, R1, R2, and R3. And those with seven persons or more would be allowed in the multiple-family zones, which is R2 and R3, with a conditional use permit. Transitional supportive housing designed as residential apartments would be permitted by right in the R2 and R3 zones, which are the multiple-family zones, and would be subject to the same standards that other multiple-family developments located in the same zone, which would mean they would have to comply with the same setbacks and parking. In conclusion, the amendment will introduce definitions and development standards for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing to Title IX of the municipal code. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the negative declaration and introduce the attached ordinance for first reading for amendment number A15710 entitled Inordinance of the City Council, of the City of Garden Grove, Adopting a Negative Declaration and Approving Amendment Number A15710, an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing. This concludes my presentation. I can ask any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Charles Mitchell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The question I have regarding the staffing of these homeless shelters, is this going to be city employees, or will they be accepting volunteers?
They would be employees of whoever operates.
Runs the house, yeah. Whoever runs a business.
Not a city facility.
But there would not be any opportunities for volunteers?
Well, you know, that's... If it's a private outfit that runs it, it certainly would be up to them whether or not they allow volunteers, but, you know, we wouldn't have any volunteers representing the city that would be there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'll close oral communication, the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, item 12A is an agreement with L3 Communications Corporation to provide and install wireless in-car video systems for our police vehicles, and Kevin Rainey will be here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. The item for consideration before you is the purchase of a new in-car video system for all enforcement vehicles for the police department, and I'd like to ask Lieutenant Ben Stoffer to make the staff presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The recommendation in this staff report is to actually reallocate part of the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act Justice Assistant Grant Funds to fund this project, as well as to authorize the city manager to engage in a contract that'll basically provide a new video recording system for all the police cars, as well as the police motorcycles. Police motorcycles, excuse me. The total cost of the project is $508,000, and the RAG funds being reallocated are $267,655. And if there are any questions, I'll answer those.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Move the issue.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Ordinances for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, your item for second reading is ordinance number 2786, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove adopting a revised development agreement between LV Development Incorporated and the city of Garden Grove.
Mr. Fratell, I'm gonna have to excuse myself, I believe, on that issue. I own property within 500 feet.
Yes, you're right.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp. Again, it's ordinance 2786, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove adopting a revised development agreement between LV Development Incorporated and the city of Garden Grove for property located on the west side of Nelson Street, north of Stanford Avenue, at 12661 Nelson Street, parcels number 89-101-11, 12, 14, 15, and 27.
Any questions? And this doesn't have to open a public hearing right here.
Just a motion.
Okay, motion?
Move the issue.
Motion received, four yes votes.
You can get through matters real fast, Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay, matters. Mr. Broadwater.
First of all, I will thank everybody for the turnout tonight, and I sure appreciate all the people showing up. It's... Happens every two years, but it's exciting even so. I wanna wish Sandy Dalton a happy birthday. What is she gonna be, about 35?
Yeah, 36.
Anyway, please, give her our wishes.
Thank you.
I certainly... Congratulations to Garden Grove High School. I mean, what a great thing for those kids, CIF winners. I was in... In 1956, I graduated from Southgate High School, and we took all city, which was 64 high schools in the Los Angeles area. And it was done that year. It had never been done before, and it has never been done since, so it might be a long time before Garden Grove gets around to doing this again. I'm sure they had a good time. I saw one game, it was great, and it's exciting. So, anyway, congratulations to them. The veteran... Let's see. The Vietnam Combat Veterans Association has a half-sized replica of the Vietnam War Memorial, and it travels the country. They built it in 1984. And they built it in 1984, and cities apply for it and get it, and show it off for three or four days. The Vietnam War Museum Committee applied for it, and we got it. So it's coming in 2011, it's going to be here for three days, October 6th through October 9th, and it costs $6,000 to, that's what the cost is to get it, I mean installation fees and stuff like that, I guess, out of the $6,000, and we already have a donor. So that's all been taken care of. So anyway, it's going to be exciting this fall, in 2011, when it happens, about nine months from now, and so it's a good thing. Merry Christmas, everybody, and I hope you have a great Christmas and a good New Year's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wen.
I had a wonderful time at the Christmas tree lighting event, and a lot of families came out and I met a lot of residents with their kids, and they really enjoyed the Santa Claus coming to the Christmas tree lighting on the fire truck. The city will be dark for the next two weeks, and I just want to thank staff for working extra hard to try to get all the matters on calendar before the next meeting. I know it's a lot of work, and also earlier, I forgot to thank the staff for their assistance the last four years. Without your assistance, my job to serve the city couldn't be that easy. It's not that easy, but it would have been harder. It's a festive time, and I want to pray for the safety of all Garden Grove residents, and that they all are economically sound so that they would have an enjoyable holidays. But for those that may not have enough to eat this holiday, I want to remind them that we have a food bank, a Garden Grove Food Bank on Knots in Garden Grove, and I would ask staff to put the address onto the website and maybe on a newsletter next time, so that our residents knows the location to the food bank. And happy birthday to Mayor Dalton and his wife Sandy, and happy holidays to staff, our residents, and this holiday is a great time and opportunity for Garden Grove residents to support the local businesses, so bye in Garden Grove, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, thanks. For starters, happy birthday to Sandy. During the holidays, a lot of events going on, we've had some good ones recently. Winter Fest was a blast, a lot of families out there enjoying Atlantis Park, and we imported a couple tons of snow, I believe, and had all kinds of festivities going on there. We opened the new skate park over there last weekend, that was a big hit, a lot of kids came out with their boards and their blades and their bikes, just tearing it up and diving right in, and some good representation from the skating vendors like Element and Vans and those guys. I actually missed the Christmas tree lighting, because my two preschoolers were doing their Christmas program at Crystal Cathedral that night, and that was something I absolutely could not miss for the life of me, so, but unfortunately, I had to miss the skate, or the tree lighting. But anyways, just a happy holidays to everybody, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Doe.
The next time we convene will be almost the middle of January, so this, I would like to take this opportunity to kind of recap 2010. Really appreciate the work of the council, I think the vast majority of our votes this year have been 5-0 votes, and that really shows unity. And I want to thank Mr. Fattell for his leadership, and the directors in the city, the different departments. I think we have come through this very difficult year very well as a city, and with the numbers that just came up today, I don't know if you guys caught it, the hottest real estate market in Orange County is Garden Grove. We, our inventory is only two and a half months on the market, meaning it would take two and a half months to sell off our entire stock at the current rate that we are selling homes in our city. To compare, Laguna Beach would take almost 10 months. So what that tells us is we're doing a good job, that the city is, you know, having great stewardship under the leadership of the mayor, the council, and the staff, and the quality of life is such that people want to come here, and they see this as a bargain for their money, education, quality of life, and such. So I'm proud to serve on this council, and I want to thank each of the council member and the mayor for such a pleasant year, and, you know, to make our work easy in the sense that we're all looking to do the right thing and trying to achieve what's best for the city. So that's why you don't see a lot of acrimony up here. Happy birthday to your wife, Mayor, and Merry Christmas to everyone in the city, and I look forward to a very prosperous 2011. Predictions are that we will inch our way back up, economically speaking, and I believe that's the case. I do see it a little bit in my business as well, so hopefully the trend continues. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to say happy birthday to my wife Sandy. As I'll echo some of the things that were said, we had the Winter Fest program, we had the clock tower, or the lighting of the Christmas tree at the clock tower, the skate park, Winter Fest, there were so many things going on, but I think these are some of the reasons, as Mr. Doe just mentioned, about Garden Grove being active in real estate sales, because people are buying homes here quicker than other places, and I think that as a city, our staff, not the council, I mean realistically, let's look at the staff, because primarily they're the ones that come up with these programs, they're the ones that come up with these venues or sites that can be used by our residents, and I want to thank them for everything they do. You're right, the year's just about over, and sometimes we don't thank people as often as we should, but we, I'm not going to name names right now, because I know I'm going to leave somebody out, and I don't want to offend anyone, but I think that's one of the things that has made it such a good year for us. We've had to suffer some of the things as other cities have, but to a lesser degree, and we have so many other programs that the staff comes up with that provide things for our community that other communities just don't have. We're frugal with our money, and when we spend it, we spend it as wisely as we can. Friday night at 5:45, the Garden Grove football team, I believe, is parading from the clock tower down to Main Street, and there, the football players and everyone will be recognized. I don't have too much more detail than that right now, but that's pretty much set in stone, at least the time that I've given you, and I think it's an opportunity to go out and, as Mr. Broadwater said, you know, share with some people an event that doesn't come by that often, it's many, many, many years, and a few generations in between. So if you're able to get out and to applaud the young people that have accomplished something that hasn't been accomplished for a long time, please do so. I'm going to adjourn the meeting tonight, actually in memory of three different people that have passed away. The first person I'd like to adjourn in honor of is John Yant. John Yant's a longtime resident of Garden Grove. In fact, his son and my son have been friends since kindergarten. John's a single dad, and so he really wrapped himself up in his son. I mean, he was involved in coaching Little League, Pop Warner, whatever it was, he was there, and his son was, and I think the proudest moment, I saw a few years ago when I went to the CHP, California Highway Patrol Academy in Sacramento, when John's son Jason graduated, and he's now a highway patrolman. But John is survived by his son Jason, his grandchildren Peyton and Dalen, and his sisters Joan and Rita, and the viewing and the burial happened last week, I went to the funeral, but just a person that was involved in so many things in the community, and, you know, it was one of those benefits where he did good things for his son, and in turn, those were good things that were done for the community and other kids, too. The second person that I'd like to adjourn in memory of is Sergeant Dale Farley from the Garden Grove Police Department. Dale passed away on December 7th after a long battle with health issues. Dale was 63 years old and became a Garden Grove Police Officer in 1969. In 1974, Dale was transferred to investigation where he worked various assignments in burglary and robbery. Dale was promoted to sergeant in 1985, where he worked in patrol, then Internal Affairs, until his retirement in 2000. His wife Linda, daughter Susan, Lord Shearer, his son, Garden Grove PD Investigator Michael Farley, his mother, Clarice Farley, his sister Sheila Chaffee, and seven grandchildren survived him. Dale was, I think, one of the first officers that I ever met when I hired on Garden Grove Police Department, and he was just one of the nicest, down-to-earth, but, I mean, just one of the nicest men that you would ever meet in your life. You know, you almost look at him and say, gee, how can this guy be a cop? Because he was soft-spoken when it needed to be, but he knew when to raise his voice, too. He was a man for, as a cop, as a cop's cop, he was a man for all situations, but as I said, one of the nicest men that I've ever met and I worked with for 26 years. It's a sad loss, and our hearts and our prayers go out to his family. The other person that passed away recently was Ed Green, the founder of Green's Glass and Garden Grove. He passed away on October 21st at his home in San Ana, and he died peaceably with his family by his side. In 1964, Ed came to California, and the day he came here, he began working at Model Glass Company in Costa Mesa. In 1968, he and a fellow Canadian opened a glass shop in Anaheim at the old Toys R. Us location, and in 1972, he moved the business to the city of Garden Grove at Harbor and Chapman. The business continued there till 2006, when the city purchased the property to build the Sheridan Hotel, and Ed and Green's Glass was relocated to Haster and Chapman. Ed was really well-respected in the community, he was well-liked by just about everybody, I think, that ever met him, and he's survived by his wife Agnes 50 years. His daughters Sherri Green, Lori Hayes, Susan Madison, his grandchildren Matthew, Michael, Jennifer, Kendra, Nicholas, Joseph, one sister Carol, and one brother Jerry. The business will go on, and the Green family will go on with the business, but they're going on without the founder and their leader, but he was quite a man, and he was very well-liked and extremely respected in the community. And I will adjourn in honor of those three, and our prayers go out to their families, and we will adjourn till the next City Council meeting Tuesday, January 11th, 2011, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you.